I will call to order this meeting of the Select Board on November 7, 2023, at 6 o'clock PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording? Okay, I will note for the record participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. First on the agenda is executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate at 30 Summer Street. The Board will reconvene in open session after the executive session. Before I entertain a motion to go into executive session under Item 2 of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town.
I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to discuss potential acquisition of real estate at 30 Summer Street. The Board will reconvene in open session after the executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We will be back. Thank you for everybody's patience. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I believe we have one set. Are we ready to proceed?
Yes.
I am. Make a motion to approve the minutes dated October 24, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next on the agenda is potential acquisition of 30 Summer Street under Article 27 of Annual Town Meeting 2023. I will turn it over to Joe Fisher, who was our liaison on this project.
Yes, so pursuant to town meeting, we have done our due diligence on the property. We are satisfied that it meets the needs of the town, that the environmental issues there have been looked at and addressed, and I am pleased to announce that the Select Board is moving forward with transaction. We expect that it will be closing sometime within the next week to 10 days, and I will turn this over to Mr. Mayo for a further discussion.
Sure, just a quick statement, just to read, just to bring everybody up to speed with where this is at. So again, as Joe just mentioned, the town has done its due diligence regarding the purchase of 30 Summer Street as authorized by town meeting. We are excited tonight to move forward with this purchase. We will continue to evaluate our options regarding the best use of the site. We continue to work with the Harbor Development Committee with regard to the whole harbor and further consider possibilities as they relate to economic development and the downtown.
So was that a harbor, was that an R?
As I said it, I knew you were gonna call.
This was the ultimate in accents there, okay.
Excellent, thank you, and thank you for all your work, Joe and Tom, on this. Bill, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, it's exciting to move forward with this project. Obviously, we are moving forward in accordance with the vote at town meeting. I think all three of us are confident that the town has done its due diligence, as Tom said, that the site can be used for a variety of different options that we're still considering, and it's exciting times for the harbor, and I think it's just great that we were able to get to this point.
Yes.
I just want to add that this is a very important piece of real estate for the town right on the water. It fits in with where this town is looking to develop for the harbor, and so this was an opportunity that we fortunately had, and we've taken advantage of it. So it's great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for everyone's hard work on this, and we look forward to continuing to work with the Harbor Development Committee. It's certainly an exciting project and an exciting piece of property for us to continue to work on and certainly for all the citizens to enjoy. And as everybody knows, and Tom Mayo mentioned, this was approved at annual town meeting. So certainly the citizens have spoken, and we're excited to move forward. Any questions or comments from members of the public? I know we have our harbor development.
No, I just want to say thank you. It's going to be an interesting process to see how we can best make this building accessible to the widest range of citizens, and we've already started the Harbor Development Committee to come up with various constituents who would have an interest in partaking in the use of that building. So this will be an ongoing process. It won't be decided anytime soon, I don't think. My only comment is that one thing that I would think is unequivocally required is public bathroom access. I think that's the one thing that would be on my list as being non-negotiable, because it's the one part of the harbor that really doesn't have any bathroom access.
Yes, good point.
So to me, that's probably the most important piece.
One thing we should add, and Marco, maybe you want to do it, is really extend our thanks to the seller, to Fird, for making this opportunity available to the town. He came to us recognizing how important it was, and we've had numerous discussions with him. He's been exceptionally courteous and really made it, shown us his commitment to the town, so we thank him.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that.
And it's not just him, it's also his wife.
Yes, they're excellent partners in this and certainly want to see the town enjoy this property for generations to come, so excellent.
So the one thing we could do to honor that is the bench has arrived to honor both Fird and Linda Lucas, and they would like to see it placed, at least for the moment, on their property. So it would be nice if we could facilitate that once the closing has happened.
Yep, we can look at that, absolutely.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, excellent. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the -- oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I think I need to call the Commission on Disabilities meeting to order. We have a quorum.
Okay.
Including the folks here, so if that's all right.
That's true.
Not exactly familiar with how to do that, so please stop me if I'm doing it wrong. I'd like to call the Commission on Disabilities meeting to order. We have in attendance myself, Art, and online, I have Megan Baker and Nicole, and I think that's it for our committee.
Okay.
So does everyone need to say aye, or is it just not that I'm calling?
Nope, you're perfect.
That's good.
Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Stephanie, I know that you are incorporating the previous notice that our Chair read in terms of compliance with the state's open meeting law.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, consider approval of the application of a common victor license submitted by Press Juice Bar LLC, 93 South Street, Hingham. We have Jonathan Bruno with us, and Shannon? Oh, welcome, excellent, come on up to the podium.
Hello.
Okay, and we have Jonathan on Zoom.
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to start, Shannon?
Sure.
Just tell us about your name and tell us about the application.
So my name's Shannon Bruno. My husband and I, or I own Press Juice Bar. We have one location in Norwell. We've been there for close to six years now, so we've been kind of looking for a while for the perfect spot for our second place, and we found Salty Days in Hingham Square. And we are hoping to be approved for our license to get into Hingham, and we have a lot of existing customers from Hingham, so we're excited to be part of the community. It's a great spot, and it's kind of.
Excellent. Well, my daughter and I go quite often to the one in Norwell, so thank you for coming to hang out.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
So I'm familiar with the business and your high-quality food. Do you have any questions or concerns with the application, Tom?
No.
Assuming everything's complete.
Nope, yep, everything went through.
Looks good, okay.
Chief signed off.
Yes. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
No, this looks terrific.
Thank you.
Bill?
No questions, good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
Excellent.
And I have to tell you, Mr. Mayo, we actually have a juice called the Hingham Haba.
We might put Tom's name.
Outstanding.
It was Kissimmee. Thank you guys very much.
Need help spelling it, I'm here for you.
We actually might change the spelling now. Thank you guys very much.
When do you anticipate your opening date?
I'm sorry?
When do you anticipate opening?
We've been saying three weeks for a while now, but I feel like we might be close to three weeks now. I don't know if my husband has a better idea.
End of the month.
It's not a surprise.
John?
Yeah, they're looking like, yeah, looking like three to four weeks, just obviously as everything goes through. We just got the building permit, was just put on the window, got an okay for the sign, so the sign will be taken down and just kind of a decal putting over the existing sign. We were very lucky, there wasn't a lot to do inside. We kind of bought all the equipment and went existing with the footprint and everything that was in there. We were lucky, it already had a, the Board of Health stuff was usually the most, whether there's the plumbing and this and that, we didn't have to do anything, and that's why it was the perfect spot for us.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Three weeks.
Thank you.
Before you go, just one, just make sure that you're comfortable with the hours that we have.
Yep.
From 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Yes.
And then on Sunday, 8:30 to 3:00.
And Saturday and Sunday.
I'm sorry, Saturday and Sunday, yes.
Yeah, 8:30 to 3:00.
Yeah, great.
Just before we vote, any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the application for a common victor license for Press Juice Bar LLC, 93 South Street, Hingham. Shannon Bruno, manager, in accordance with the application for a common victor license filed with the Town of Hingham on October 20, 2023, with the following operating hours: Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM; Saturday and Sunday, 8:30 AM to 3:00 PM, subject to the approval of all applicable town boards and departments.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Excellent, best of luck.
Thank you. Hope to see you down there. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is discussion and potential vote on the Select Board naming policy. Tom, do you want to kick us off here?
Certainly. So this is a process that was started, well, technically, I guess it was started many years ago. It was brought through town meeting this past year where a bylaw was passed. The bylaw references a Select Board policy that will help us govern this process. For the last couple of months, we've been evaluating this process. We've written the draft, it's now on, I think it's third iteration. At the last meeting, we had a discussion, and I think there was just a desire to let it go through one more cycle, bring it back to this meeting, and potentially take a vote and hear if there's any more feedback, but I don't believe we've heard, we have received any more information from the public.
Correct, I have not seen any either. Okay, I know I had one question that I had asked last week and just wanted to have John Coughlin kind of answer in public so everybody can hear it. It was about, under the approval section, John added the phrase "in consultation with the Superintendent of the Town of Hingham Department of Public Works." John, do you mind just explaining the rationale for that?
Sure, so that only goes to the physical characteristics of an installation, and I think Randy has expressed in the past, sometimes if a bench is put in or some other physical component is put in on the side of a building or on town property, that sometimes he has to maintain that going forward, and he has certain specs that he wants to at least have considered as part of the process so that they can do landscaping around it, it's easily accessible, there's not a lot of maintenance depending on the materials. So the intent of this is to have them consult with the DPW Superintendent. He does not get a veto, the Board would still make the final decision, but at least he'd be involved in the process for doing the installations.
Excellent, thank you for clarifying that. That was my only outstanding issue or question. I think everything else has been incorporated and we discussed last week. Do you have any additional comments?
Nothing beyond what we've previously discussed. I think this has been a thorough vetting, given members of the public ample opportunity to provide comments, and I'm comfortable with the draft.
Okay, excellent. Bill?
I think it's fine, I respectfully disagree, I don't think we need that in there, but I'm not gonna change my vote on the matter, so we would consult with him anyways. So by the way, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to take a vote.
I make a motion to adopt the Select Board naming policy under Town of Hingham General Bylaw, Article 40, Section 6, as discussed and presented on October 24, 2023.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you to everyone who worked on that, submitted feedback. It was a very good process. I know it took us several weeks, but I think we wanted to feel confident that it was thorough and in the best spot it could be. This is certainly an important tool that we will use going forward to really solidify the private-public partnerships that we're looking for, so thank you for everybody's hard work on that and patience. Thanks, John. Okay, next on the agenda, discussion on renaming the Hingham Senior Center to the Hingham Center for Active Living. We have Jennifer Young, do you want to come up?
I was on Joe Evans, who's the Chair for Council on Aging.
Excellent. Do you want to come on up as well?
Excellent, well, thank you for being here. Do you want to explain kind of what's in front of us?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm here tonight with the full support of the Council on Aging to ask the Select Board to support the Town Administrator's recommendation that all of the Town of Hingham Senior Center programs presently operated by the Council on Aging under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8B, shall hereafter be reorganized, rebranded, and operated as the Town of Hingham Center for Active Living. Now, I understand this request is different than the original memo that I had sent out, and I want to apologize for that. There was a little bit of lack of clarity on my part, and this request is, it's more than changing the sign over the front door, so I really wanted to convey that to you. You know, what's in my head really didn't translate to the paper. I have this big vision, which is hard to put into words sometimes. So it's about reorganizing and rebranding the functions of our department, which operates our programs and services. It's updating our letterheads, our newsletter, website, vehicle lettering, social media, and much more. It's about how we present ourselves to the community. I can give you a brief history about how we got to this point in requesting the reorganization and rebranding of the Senior Center. So the department and the Council on Aging has done an extensive amount of work over the last year and a half leading up to this request. In 2022, you may remember, we commissioned UMass Boston Gerontology Institute to conduct the community-wide needs assessment. The results can be found on our website. It's a light read. 24% of the survey respondents aged 60-plus reported the reason for not using the Senior Center as "I'm not old enough." We're targeted to serve 60-plus. They also reported they would use the center if there were more people like them there. The recommendations of the report included exploring strategies to update the image of the Senior Center. So with 1 in 4 residents in Hingham over the age of 60, we need to do a better job educating the community on what our programs and services are, and that really starts with how we introduce ourselves, because let's face it, nobody wants to be called a senior unless it's for a discount.
And sometimes even then.
And in February of this year, following another year-long rebranding project, the Council on Aging approved rebranding from the Senior Center to the Center for Active Living with a tagline "Connect, Discover, and Grow." There are currently eight centers in Massachusetts that have rebranded from Senior Center to Center for Active Living, including Plymouth, Sandwich, Chatham, Newton, Redding, Dennis, Eyre, and Cheshire. And this also follows the trend from the federal government renaming the Administration on Aging in 2012 to the Administration on Community Living. The state's fallen a little bit behind in terms of keeping the Council on Aging, which is our advisory capacity, so this request is about giving us a new brand and a new face that better represents the vibrant members that we serve.
Excellent, thank you. Well, thank you for explaining all of that to us, and I know a lot of work has gone into this, and I certainly appreciate you doing the survey and taking the feedback very seriously and trying to implement it to make change. I fully support the rebranding, and I think that you referenced a grant in terms of making some of the changes. Obviously, that takes time and money to make that happen. Do you want to just talk a little bit about that?
Sure, absolutely. So Massachusetts Association for Councils on Aging administers service incentive grants each year, and this year, they're offering the opportunity for up to $10,000 to help in marketing and outreach, to help your Council on Aging or Center become the talk of the town, to educate the community on the programs and services that you offer. So with the timing of the grant and our initiative to rebrand, it really is something that we want to focus on. I have a whole plan laid out, really to start at the end of November and sort of culminating at the end of June of this year with a nice reveal event, you know, we had to talk about signage and other materials that we would need, but this will really give us the opportunity to go out into the community with some product that we can purchase to help bring attention to ourselves, you know, going out to the farmer's market and have a nice big easy op that says "Center for Active Living" with vibrant colors that really do represent who we are. I'd like to highlight an opportunity that we've created, which will be training and recruiting brand ambassadors to help us get the word out into the community. We have a very small staff, I know that, I've said that before in the past, so really we rely very heavily on our volunteers, and this is a way to recognize the work that they do for the community in front of what our initiatives are.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Joe, questions, comments?
I do. First, just a question, Tom. So I noticed in the document here that it's Jennifer Young, the Elder Services Department Director. Will her title be changed as a result of this?
Good question. Yes, why not?
So, I mean, I think that would be quite appropriate. But just more generally, I think the timing of this initiative is perfect because the town is moving forward with our plans for citing and developing what we have been calling a new Senior Center, and now we'll be calling it a new Center for Active Living, and I think this will go into what the concept will be for that structure, whether it's going to be a town hall or another location. And so I think bringing this change into being now will help shape what that center will look like. So I think the timing is great, really appreciate your efforts. Thanks.
Yeah, I want to thank you for the appointments that you've made recently to the Council on Aging. We now have a full complement, which is really impressive. We have a number of people who have extensive background in marketing, also in community engagement, and we are going to be using them to their fullest, so that is really good.
Excellent, that's great to hear, thank you. Bill?
I guess a follow-up to Joe's question, Jennifer, have, do you know if other towns have changed a name, changed a director's title as well?
So each community is set up very differently. I believe there are 350 councils on aging in the state. There are still a couple of towns that have denied introducing one, but with that being said, the various towns that have changed, some have changed their departments, such as Plymouth, to the Center for Active Living, and the Council on Aging would remain the same because it's set up by state statute, but it varies by town. What I would like to see, and I know that I've discussed with John Coughlin, is going to town meeting and discussing, or asking for a town meeting to approve changing the name of the department to the Center for Active Living, and looking at the other items that would need to be amended in the bylaws, you know, including our budget, revolving account, gift account, and so on.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. All right, we do have a vote. Are we ready to?
Sure. I'd make a motion, as recommended by the Town Administrator, pursuant to the provisions of Section 2B XVII of Chapter 263 of the Acts of 2016. The Select Board hereby approves the following: that all of the Town of Hingham Senior Center programs presently operated by the Council on Aging under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8B, shall hereafter be reorganized, rebranded, and operated as a Town of Hingham Center for Active Living.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, to consider acceptance of the ADA Self-Assessment and Transition Plan. I know Art is gonna walk us through. Do you want to come up, Stephanie? And I see that Sharon Allen has joined us as well.
All right.
You're fine, take your time.
I have my phone, I have to turn my leg on. I have a new brace, and so I have to actually turn it on, so that's.
Oh my gosh.
Thank you. Forgot to turn my leg on.
You are the bionic woman.
Yes, you're a superhero.
My brace is the first bionic clothing that's been approved by the FDA.
Wow.
Crazy.
Well, excellent, thank you for being here.
Thank you. All right, now I'll be quiet.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present on work that's been underway for some time, and we're very pleased to share with you a final report that we will be filing with the Town Administrator and ultimately sharing with the Massachusetts Office on Disability, but more importantly, putting to work. So there's a lot of ground to cover, but I'm going to try to keep this as short as I can. First and foremost, I want to thank the Commission on Disability, who has partnered with the town throughout this project, certainly starting with, under the leadership of Diane DiNapoli, I think she's still with us, I can't see her on my screen, and today, led by Stephanie Gertz. This has been a journey for me, it's been a journey for the town, it's been a townwide effort to get a better understanding of where the town stands with regard to compliance with Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. I'm hoping that consultants from our partner organization, the Institute for Human Center Design, will be joining us. I think we're running a little bit ahead of where they expected, when they expected to join.
They haven't been to one of our meetings before?
They have.
Okay.
So here's, in one slide, an agenda, like I said, a lot to cover, and I'll do my best to be short and sweet and to the point. First, a little bit about the American Disabilities Act. Passed in 1990, a sweeping piece of federal legislation with five titles that touch on so many different aspects of public life, the private sector as well as on the public side. What we have been doing and what we've been focusing on is Title II, which addresses public services, and under the ADA, and under Title II, state and local governments must take steps to examine programs and set a compliance plan. Our whole project, our whole objective is, when viewing town programs, activities, and facilities, and looking at them in their entirety, the objective is to achieve program access, which is, as a whole, those activities and facilities being accessible and usable by people with disabilities. The goal is, obviously, complete and equal participation, and that's something to strive for, but the first priority and first goal is to achieve that program access. I do see that we have one member of the Institute for Human Center Design, Megan Dufresne, who's on the line. Megan, thank you for joining us this evening. Megan, thank you for joining us this evening. I'm not sure if David is online, we'll check in a little bit later, but I'm hoping that we can convey a little bit of the magnitude of this project, a townwide effort to assess our programs, our activities, and our facilities. We needed a reliable partner, and having secured a grant from the Massachusetts Office on Disability, and having conducted an RFP process, we identified the institute as being a clear and seasoned partner, and with their support, completed quite a bit in terms of assessments. In addition to looking at how the town does business, assessing 10-town buildings and facilities, five schools, 16 outdoor facilities, and with an additional amount contributed by the town, completed an additional task, which is to evaluate 2.7 miles of sidewalk in Hingham Square and Hingham Center. Together, this gives us a great foundation for understanding what the town needs to do to move from where we are today towards compliance. And all of that information is compiled in numerous different types of reports, but the real magic of this process and a real item of value created by Megan's team was to create a transition plan, which is essentially a spreadsheet, a tracking document that identifies essentially everything we need to do and puts it in one spot, so that we can centrally manage while working with different departments on actually executing to get different pieces of the job done. And that, because it's a townwide project, there are a lot of things to think about, but with the institute's help, we've been able to come up with an approach that prioritizes the projects and assigns a level of effort to give us a sense of roughly how intense each of these projects will be to complete. Now, when thinking about programs, services, and activities, a lot of that assessment took place at the town level, and really focused on conversations with town staff and a survey of department heads, and I think the top-line message it reveals, revealed to me, is that certainly since 1990, the town has worked on implementing the ADA in different ways at the policy level, but there's been staff turnover, there've been some changes, and we haven't always kept up with them. And I think these two slides will point to where we've had some success, and I think where, going forward as the ADA coordinator, you know, I will be addressing. For example, one of the basics is designating a responsible employee as the ADA coordinator, and that's one of the first roles I took on when coming to Hingham about two years ago. The town has to have a grievance procedure. We have one, but we found that not all survey respondents, not all department heads are familiar with the specifics or the details, so we have an excellent training opportunity. Notice of ADA requirements, very similar. We do have elements of that information, but it's not really well and consistently communicated. There'll be an opportunity for the town to address that. Reasonable modification of policies and practices. These are the words that, no evidence the town was unable to provide any of that, an institute finding. Employment and reasonable accommodation, again, no evidence the town's failed to provide that. And last but not least, effective communications, aids and devices. Again, the town has, in our policy, described commitments, but again, at the department head level, not consistent information about that, and something for us to address going Facilities. Now, this is a very big piece of the work, simply because the town of 24,000 people, numerous facilities and outdoor spaces, all of which are, need to be made at the program level accessible. So what did our consultant do with us, is they essentially completed 31 reports that, for each, described, provided some background on the facility, identified accessibility issues, described some best practices and inclusive design, you know, beyond the ADA standard for us to be thinking about, and developed a catalog listing, so the property owner, the department head, would have a booklet in, you know, his or her hand that they can look at to see exactly what needs attention. And all that work was measured against two standards, the 2010 ADA standards for accessible design, and 2006 Massachusetts Architectural Access Board standard, 521 CMR. Where the codes differ, compliance is required with more stringent code. Generally, they're very similar, but 521 CMR has a little bit more stringent requirements, generally with regard to bathrooms and similar facilities. So very quickly, just an example, focusing on town hall, background, key accessibility issues, provided in a format that's easy for people to read and understand, as well as some ideas for best practices and inclusive design. Just thinking about town hall, different approaches to parking and signage, and critically, again, for every one of our facilities, a table listing what issues identified, what type of issue, critically a picture, so there can be no misunderstanding about what an issue is. Identifying the standard and identifying recommended fixes. Clearly, a roadmap, task by task, that'll help us get from where we are in a given facility to where we want to be. The transition plan, this is the guidance document that I had described earlier. Again, it puts all the information in one place, and it allows the town to really manage moving from where we are to where we want to be going forward. This provides a very small picture of what is a very large document, that rolls all the different tasks together, assigns a priority, with the highest priority of the areas to really think about first are issues that relate to program access or safety, and also what we've described as a level of effort, and that is for interior projects, whether they can be largely addressed with human labor or different broad levels of investment. Over the past two years, labor costs and material costs have increased tremendously, really left us in a tough spot in terms of coming up with precise, reliable numbers for the purposes of projections. So that was a lot of work. I want to assure you that even though I had the privilege of reading every single one and providing comments, working closely with David and Megan, that it certainly wasn't a third-floor conference room, closed-door kind of activity, an inclusive, open process where we'd look for input in different ways. And certainly, we started with our department heads to check what we found in the field against understood experience on the part of people actually own a building or real estate, and we had some back and forth that led to some improvement and refinements. Through a second round of drafts, we made them available, starting with the Commission on Disabilities, certainly got useful input, insight, in terms of how to go forward. We also made the whole range of documents and drafts available in a couple of different formats, certainly starting online, in Adobe Acrobat, as well as MS Word, Microsoft Word, to enhance accessibility, and in the Hingham Public Library, we also made documents available in print conventionally, as well as in Braille, all these portions of the document, so we created the opportunity for more people to have an understanding of what we're doing and provide feedback. And last but not least, on the 27th of September, the Commission on Disabilities hosted a public hearing, where with David and Megan's help, or leadership, I should say, we presented some of what we're discussing now, but more importantly, provided the opportunity for questions, answers, and feedback from the public. I'm sure that everybody who was part of that meeting could recall just how colorful that was, but given a Zoom bomber, but what was more impressive was how the commission adjusted to the situation, dropped off, everybody did come back together, and we continued the meeting. So where does that leave us now? Just a few notes on implementation. There are different aspects of what we've been doing in town, small steps, but first steps towards Title II compliance. I want to start by pointing to some work that our IT team has been doing, given the importance of how we communicate with the community through our website. They've certainly met with the commission, they've updated their website with Civic Plus, the host, and worked with accessibility experts, and addressed many issues and implemented best practices. They've deployed an accessibility tool called UserWay, which is a simple add-on at the website level that provides users many different options for making, or getting better access or being able to better read or interpret what's on our webpages. And importantly, over the past year, we've deployed throughout the town new copiers and scanners that allow us to generate searchable PDFs. That's a big deficit for us, at least looking backwards in terms of documents that we've created, but going forward, as we develop documents and add them to the website, they will be searchable and therefore more accessible. Now, along the way, we've done some work with town meeting. Certainly, we've, over time, we've looked at different approaches to seating, to making town meeting more easily reachable or accessible. We've also experimented with a large-format warrant book, which Sharon did a great job creating, and we've also experimented with, and I think made a lot of progress, with live transcription, so that people can see in real time what's being talked about and understand what's happening on the town meeting floor. And what is important to stress that going forward, many of the issues or Title II deficiencies, many of them will get addressed through new construction. I mean, good examples are for our current public, our current police station headquarters, we certainly identified issues there, but many of those will be addressed and corrected through the design and construction of the public safety facility. Same with the former Foster Elementary School, or the soon-to-be former Foster Elementary School. The new design and construction will certainly address many of the issues that existed with that previous facility, and as you've heard recently, our rec. department is looking to create a new playground at Cronin Field, and that design will address various ADA concerns as well. So these are just some of the steps, but certainly there's more to do. And this slide, I think, provides a little bit of a roadmap. First and foremost, as I said before, with the plan finalized, finalize it and file it with the town administrator, Tom, for adoption, share it with the Massachusetts Office on Disability, our funder, to not just develop the relationship with them, but over time, with a plan in place, have the ability to access grant funds for implementation. Right now, as you know, we're entering the budget process, and as we have those conversations, we're talking with department heads about what they can do to advance the plan, identifying low-hanging fruit, which are the relatively inexpensive, easy-to-implement items, and identifying other projects that could possibly be put together as part of a capital outlay request. Certainly, that's something that we'll be talking about over the coming weeks. I plan to brief the Capital Outlay Committee in December, and certainly, within the Select Board office, we're developing an approach to tracking all of this, so that we can identify what's been done, hopefully celebrate it with the community, but also help us focus on other issues that will need more attention, time, perhaps more funding. And last but not least, I think this is a point of departure for the town's relationship with the Commission on Disability. There's so much that I think we can work from here. Certainly, I would welcome any input or support in identifying other funding opportunities that could help us address some of the issues that we have here. So I've covered a lot of ground, but this has not been my work, it's really been, it's been a community effort, and what I would like to do very briefly is ask if, first of Stephanie, if you have anything you'd like to add?
I really just wanted to offer my thanks, and I get to sit at the table, but I've done really almost no work on this. I'm really inspired by how much good thinking has been gone on, and how much good work, and I would just ask us all to remember that disability is one of the few minority groups that any of us can join at any time, and so one of the quote-unquote easier things to think about is mobility, because many of us will have the opportunity, you know, whether it's a broken leg, whether it's a bad hip or a bad knee, to not be able to walk as fluidly, and a lot of the changes and a lot of the things we're thinking about will be good for everyone. And the famous example that I always quote is the curb cuts that were developed for ADA. So those were originally done for wheelchair users, but who has not wield a rolling cart or rolling luggage or a baby stroller? The curb cuts have really worked for everyone. So when we look at these designs, yes, they will help our population with disabilities, but it really should help all of us as a town, and I think it's really exciting to see all of the great work that's going on. So thank you to everyone who's worked on it, thank you to Art, thank you to our consultants, and thank you to the committee, and I'd like to do a special shout-out to Diane, our member Amerita. There's been tremendous work, and of course, to the Select Board, and for all of the funding you will now grant us. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to ask Megan and/or David, both from the Institute for Human Center Design, if you have anything to add, very briefly. We would certainly welcome that.
Okay, I'll start. My name is David West, and Megan, please feel free to chime in as well. I know Megan and I would both like to begin by thanking Art for really being on top of this whole transition plan development process, helping to keep us focused, giving us every indication that he's going to work with the commission and with the people in Hingham to actually implement the improvements and improve accessibility in all the ways that they can. I know Megan and I were impressed that Hingham has included some things that not every city and town does, but it's very important to do so in looking at walkways and sidewalks and pedestrian areas that we, many that we did. Hingham has a report that has GIS data that very precisely helps locate things that need to be corrected, and typically greatly improves the chance that those things will be taken care of. We think it's very important that Hingham, and they've already made progress with this, included focusing on their website as a program or service of a city or town. It's one of the key ways people, including people with a range of disabilities, interact with the town, so it's just outstanding that they're doing that. We were impressed with the range of physical locations that we looked at, everything from what you might expect, like a town hall or some of the schools, but also looking at a rowing, boating instructional facility, and, you know, making sure that that was available to people in the town, which was, you know, just excellent. And Megan pointed out to me this morning that, you know, while she was doing some work at some of the schools, people who were working at the school, if she pointed out things that were just a matter of a little bit of physical labor, they started correcting things while we were still preparing the reports, which is a good sign, and we have, I guess most importantly, every confidence that the Art and the commission and the folks in Hingham will start making progress on the issues that have been identified, and I'm sure with Art's leadership and the work of others will have every success in trying also to raise some additional funds, to be able to correct some key things that maybe otherwise wouldn't have been able to be attended to at least quite as quickly. Megan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I can just mention that I think it's been a real phenomenal response from the Town of Hingham with the way that they involved the Commission on Disabilities and the Council on Aging from the very beginning of the project. from the very beginning of the project. And also, we found that the town did request more details than other towns typically do to make sure that repairs and renovations are done correctly. And so, those were two things that really impressed me, as well as the emphasis on providing accessible documents, such as the Braille version, as well as versions of the documents that were, are accessible by screen readers.
Okay, thank you, both of you. Appreciate your time and support. I guess with that,
Excellent.
Any way we can address questions you may have?
Yes, well, thank you, Art, for taking on this role, especially right from the beginning of joining Hingham. It's such important work, so thank you. And I also want to thank Diane Denapoli, the former Chair of the Commission, for being such a fierce advocate and really kicking this project off. So thank you. And Stephanie, your continued leadership is so helpful with the entire Commission. And it sounds like we've had very excellent partners in the consultants at the Institute, so thank you. It's a tremendous amount of work. I know it's lots and lots of documents, lots of data. Megan, it sounds like they didn't warn you. We're very data-driven and ask lots of questions. But I'm thrilled to see it. It's so comprehensive, and I think it does give us a really good roadmap for making very impactful change. And the transition plan is excellent. So I'm excited to get started on that. Bill, I know you attended the public hearing. Do you want to add anything?
No, just want to thank Diane as well for her great work in getting this started. Stephanie, your leadership has been tremendous. Megan and David, thank you for your contributions to this. And I want to thank the entire Commission. You know, for the last two years or so, to Stephanie's point, the last two years ago, I have been dealing with a medical condition that has impacted my mobility. And as Stephanie noted, until you really get in that position, you really don't understand or appreciate the gravity of what those with disabilities deal with. And it's opened my eyes to a lot of challenges we have in our community to improve conditions, to help those with disabilities. And I think this is a good start. What I'd like to propose is that every couple months or so, we get an update on where we are with this, when we see how we're doing with getting that low-hanging fruit improved and dealing with those issues, how we're dealing with our grant applications to help deal with the projects as well. So we can continue to make impactful change and continue to move forward with this, because it's a very important initiative. I'm glad we're at this point now. And I'm looking forward to moving forward and making our community better for everybody.
Excellent, thank you, Bill. And that's a great point. Are you, Stephanie, are you reviewing the transition plan at your Commission meetings on a monthly basis?
We haven't been. I mean, but we plan to start. I mean, we have a meeting tomorrow night, and our plan was to review what happens tonight. So I'll make sure that reviewing the transition plan becomes a regular agenda item for us.
Excellent, excellent. And then, Art, we can talk about the right cadence, but maybe a quarterly update to the board would certainly be helpful. Excellent, thank you. Joe?
Just a few comments. I spent the time with Art going through that extensive spreadsheet that has the various items, and it is quite impressive, detailed. And I think it has the backing, I know it has the backing of this board to make sure that we move forward. There are some instances where towns engage in studies, and then nothing happens. And we want to make sure that that is a different situation here, that in fact, something does happen, and we are committed to making it happen. So thank you, everyone, for all your work. It really shows. Thanks.
Yes, you certainly have our support. And I think the updates will be helpful to know how it's going, but also if there are ways that we can help or obstacles that we can help remove. We're certainly happy to do that. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Diane? Diane, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Diane Denapoli, 16, Garner. Art, I just want to first start with thanking you for, you really have been tremendous with this. And I certainly know the report is lengthy and extensive. And I learned a lot just walking through, deciding what would be in the evaluation and working with the town to add the streets that we did add. I think that will be really important, especially as we look at harbor redevelopment, to have that. So thank you. I know that wasn't the initial scope, but you fought to get that included. And I appreciate that. I think everyone kind of touched on it. I know and I hope this will become a living document. It isn't just going to be a plan, but it has to be looked at and evaluated. And to that, I'm very happy this is part of long-term capital discussions, but also perhaps we should have someone coordinate with the master plan implementation team. Just so that this document is kind of in the mind of anyone who's going to build, start something, or do anything new in town to really make sure we're thinking of access and inclusion, not just compliance, kind of as a foresaw. So thank you to everyone on the Commission and the Institute. It's phenomenal. I've learned so much from that report. And I'm looking forward to seeing some of these things coming to fruition. Thank you.
Excellent, that's a great point, Diane. The Master Plan Implementation Committee has started meeting. And there are many recommendations in the master plan related to accessibility, inclusion, and, you know, accessible design. So I know that will be, you know, coming up with different initiatives coming out of the master plan. And as you may know, there is going to be a meeting on December 6, where the Master Plan Committee will kind of re-kick off and share the goals of the master plan and kind of the highlights of the recommendations with town committee boards and chairs. So certainly, the Commission on Disabilities is invited and strongly encouraged to participate. And there, each member of the Master Plan Implementation Committee is actually a liaison to all the boards and committees. So you will have a person, a contact person.
Will that be announced, like at the December 6 meeting?
Someone will reach out to you before December 6.
Thank you.
Yes, so that's coming. But that's an excellent point. Certainly, those are, that's kind of our goalpost for the town over the next decade. Other comments or questions? Okay, well, excellent. Thank you so much for all the work. Thank you for presenting to us this evening. Certainly so important for not just us to hear, but for everybody in the community to understand. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
All right. Should Stephanie adjourn her meeting?
Should.
You're welcome to stay, but if you want to adjourn.
By roll call. Did you do it by roll call? Stephanie, are you going to take a motion to adjourn your committee?
Oh, right, I'm sorry. I'd like to adjourn the Commission on Disabilities meeting.
So you need a motion and a second on that?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Great, and do I have a--
The Commission on Disability.
Thank you. And a second?
And then just roll call vote, if you just call everybody's name.
Do I have a second? Do you want a second?
Yeah.
Art, a second thing. And I'll do a roll call. Art?
Aye.
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Thank you. And Megan, are you still on? Megan Baker?
Yes, aye.
Thank you, all right?
And you're an aye as well?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you for being here. Exciting. Okay, next on the agenda are appointments.
I would make a motion to appoint Joanne Hellman to the Climate Action Commission for a two-year term ending June 30, 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passes unanimously. Excellent, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a comment we have not covered yet on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Next is Town Administrator and Select Board Reports. Michelle?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Hi, Art?
Nothing to add.
Thank you for all your work, I know. Tom?
Just a couple of liquor licenses, one-day liquor licenses to announce. The first is the Hingham Cemetery Court and their Dead of Winter series at Ames Chapel. Their first event was held on November 2, and I approved this liquor license on that day, so in advance of that meeting. And they have two other events scheduled for January 6 and the 2nd for February 1. All of these events start at 6:30 PM and run through 10 PM. There's 40 to 90 anticipated, whatever, what are they?
Participants?
Participants, there you go. Guests, thank you, at the event. And the police detail is not required. And the police chief did sign off on everything. And the second one-day liquor license that I issued is for the congregation Shereesh Shalom, Cantor Stephen Weiss's 20-year celebration. And that is going to be held on Saturday, November 18, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, with an estimated attendance of 120 people, and the police chief has signed off. And a detail is required for that event.
Excellent, that's exciting.
I think there will be more than 120 people.
I confirmed with Joe that it is not a surprise, so I didn't just blow the surprise.
Then it's on the 18th, I thought it was on the 17th?
I'm sorry?
Stephen's anniversary is the 18th, not the 17th?
It's the whole weekend.
Oh, well, he gets a whole weekend.
All right, it's the whole weekend. But on Friday night, we'll have the special prayers.
It's Friday.
On Saturday, we will be drinking.
What night were you invited to?
The 17th.
Come Saturday.
That's a nice, the fun night. We have dueling pianos, we have--
That's fun.
I should say on the record, Friday night will be great, too.
Yes, spiritual and lovely, I'm sure.
And it's not just Friday nights, also Saturday morning as well.
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful, well, that's certainly a reason to celebrate. Bill?
Yeah, so I got a text a day or two ago from a resident reminding me that it was approximately a year ago that the town came together through two almost unanimous town meeting votes to pass the debt exclusions for foster school and for the public safety building. And I thought, when I got that message, you know, I thought about, you know, at the time, what a wonderfully positive event that was. Not only the lead-up to it, but the community coming together to support two very important projects for both our school department and for our first responders. And it reminded me that, you know, sometimes in this community, we can disagree, but it's important that everyone understand that everybody involved with this town, whether it be town employees, whether it be volunteers, whether it be elected officials, or whether it be residents, all want what's best for our community. And everybody is trying to work in their own way for the betterment of that objective. So just wanted to put, I just wanted to say, it reminded me of that a year ago. And that's always something that we are all striving for. And we should just remember that every once in a while.
Yes, thank you for mentioning that, Bill. We certainly have a lot to be proud of. But it is a nice reminder that as a community, we have a record of coming together and lifting each other up. And that's certainly a tradition we're proud of and certainly need to continue. So thank you. Joe?
Just one item to report today. Joe Moschino reconvened the group that had been focusing on continuing ferry service for the town. We had a meeting, and it was interesting, some statistics. Over the past year, there have been 1,174,000 passengers on the ferry line, 47,000 trips. So usage is up. And there's no indication that the state has any interest in reducing ferry service. That was a concern during the pandemic. And I think the trend is the other way. They're looking to enhance ferry service, which is an important aspect for the town. It's a way people can come visit. And it's important for development of the harbor. So it was a very positive report.
Excellent, great news. And thank you for your continued advocacy on that. The only thing I would like to mention is we will be honoring and celebrating our veterans on Saturday, November 11, at 11:00 AM at Town Hall. And all are welcome, so please join us. Okay, take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are adjourned at 7:33 PM.